We will call this meeting of the Town Council to order and Kelly, roll call please.
Councilmember Kloostad? Here. Vice Mayor Paulaby?
I don't think that's us. I am here.
Mayor Romac?
Here.
Councilmember Zabriskie?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Thank you. All right, please now stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, republic.
Thank you all very much. This is now public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to make a comment on any item not on tonight's agenda. Items on the agenda, we'll ask for public comment later when we get to that agenda item. We do ask that you please state your name, and each speaker will have three minutes to give their public comment. There is a timer to my left, your right, that you should be able to see, so you know when you are getting close to the end of time. We do also have papers in the back after you speak, if you don't mind filling one out, just so we have your name. So with that, I will welcome a public comment.
Good evening. My name is Benjamin Levine. I'm a member of Tahoe Donner's Board of Directors and Vice President of the Tahoe Donner Association. I'm here to speak about a critical issue for the council, the region, and for Tahoe Donner: the lack of available and affordable workforce housing. As one of the largest employers in this region, addressing the workforce housing shortage has become one of Tahoe Donner's top priorities. We've partnered with the Mountain Housing Council since its inception, and for more than a decade, we've offered subsidized housing to approximately 15% of our seasonal workforce. Now we're taking the next big step. Just about a year ago, Tahoe Donner's Board asked our management team to work with our consultants at Economic Planning Systems to complete an employee housing action plan. At our board meeting on October 27th, Tahoe Donner's Board will review and provide feedback on the plan's draft recommendations. I invite council members and town staff to watch our meeting online or to attend in person. Our goal is to finalize the action plan before the end of the year. Indeed, as reflected in our budget plans, we've already begun setting aside money to fund implementation. In developing this action plan, Tahoe Donner has been grateful for the interviews, advice, and information provided by Town of Truckee staff members. With the goal of working together to develop effective solutions for the region's lack of available and affordable workforce housing, I hope the Town of Truckee and Tahoe Donner can continue to build on this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda? Please come on up to the podium.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Deirdre Henderson. I'm a full-time resident of Truckee, and I'm the group leader of the North Tahoe Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. So I'm here tonight to give you some good news, in a week when we could all use some good news. The Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, a piece of legislation that this Town Council has consistently supported, has been reintroduced into the House of Representatives on September 27th. It's HR 5744. As you know, this is a carbon fee and dividend policy. It's been introduced by Representatives Salud Carvajal and Scott Peters of California. In the last session, this bill had 95 cosponsors, and it was included in the language of the Inflation Reduction Act until the very last minute, when it fell one vote short, a certain senator from West Virginia would not vote for it. But we've reintroduced it, and we think that there is a good possibility that we will get a lot more support for it in this session. So thank you very much for your support in the past. A second piece of good news is that our representative, Kevin Kiley, has joined the House Climate Solutions Caucus. The Climate Solutions Caucus is a caucus of Republicans and Democrats, the so-called Noah's Ark Caucus. You can only join it with a member of the other party. He has joined. It is a safe space where Republicans and Democrats can talk about climate-positive policies. We think this is a very good sign. We are very glad to see the caucus back for this session of Congress. It already has 64 members. It has a reputation for being one of the caucuses that actually meets regularly and does work. One of the first things it did was it had a presentation by the Legislative Director and one of the Research Directors from Citizens Climate Lobby on clean energy permitting reform. Clean energy permitting reform is something that there is an interest from both parties in doing in this session of Congress, and it is essential if we are going to meet the objectives of the Inflation Reduction Act and our national objective of reaching a 30% reduction in emissions by 2030. And that is a really, really important thing for us to do. So I wanted to give you that good news. It's always good to reinforce good behavior by our members of Congress.
And thank you very much.
So please thank Kevin Kiley.
Thank you very much. Thanks for those updates.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Come on up.
Hopefully bringing more good news that Xander's Liquor Store is reopening in town. But so my name is Jamie Legary. This is Stacy Larson, and we're here this evening to discuss the iconic Spirits Sign and confirm it's relocating prior to winter. This iconic sign is a part of Truckee's heritage and history, has been on Donner Pass Road since the 1940s when the building was constructed. Over the decades, various bottle shops and businesses have moved in and out of the location, but the sign still remained as a staple of our town, so much so that the town itself recognized the importance of preserving this iconic sign in Truckee. On January 27, 2015, the Truckee Town Council adopted a non-conforming or abandoned sign ordinance. Specifically, the ordinance stated, "The council hereby adopts the following iconic signs inventory, which identifies signs that are significant to the community and enhance the character of Truckee. These signs shall be permitted to be maintained so as to preserve and retain the integrity and quality of the sign." Only 10 signs were memorialized on this iconic list, and it was at the top of the inventory list. In February 2015, Xander's moved into the Gateway Location, purchased the sign, and restored its bottle shop legacy. Working with the direction of the Town Council at the time, Xander's professionally restored the sign at an expense of $20,000. During the restoration, it created quite a stir, as many Truckee residents were distressed that the sign suddenly went missing, so much so that then, right after that, the Sierra Sun did a whole article about the history of the sign and the legacy of that section. So in 2020, the Hospital District purchased the building. Leases were not renewed for tenants, and Xander's was forced to close its location and find a new spot. Xander's was able to secure a new lease in the West Truckee Center, which is the old factory outlets, and will be reopening in November. The landowner of that complex is very enthusiastic and improves the sign moving to this location at any point that we can. We have had overwhelming response from people in town wanting to keep the sign. We're here tonight to hopefully expedite the process and preserve the sign. Time is of the essence, and we would like to acknowledge and thank the hospital for graciously allowing Xander's to leave the sign in its place while we are relocating. However, the Gateway Building will be going under renovation soon, and will be requested to take the sign down. We are fearful of losing its iconic designation by taking the sign down without approval to move it to its new location first. Application processes of any kind can be lengthy in time. We would also like to sign the sign up at our opening to link members of the community to the relocation. The cost of the variance application fee deposit is $4,500, and we've been verbally quoted $7,000 for the application process by the planning department. This does not include if we need or desire a land use attorney to assist us. This is a large, time-consuming cost to move a sign a mile down a road that has already been recognized by a previous Town Council as an important character piece for the town, and we would like to preserve that. In closing, we would like to request the council to confer and provide feedback to the planning department on our next steps. We feel moving the sign is already preserved based on the iconic sign ordinance, and would like to schedule this move prior to opening and winter settling in. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the pictures, too. Would anyone else like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment, and just as a reminder, we don't take action or discuss any of the items raised in public comment, but we appreciate hearing from all of our community members. All right, with that, we will move on to our presentations for the evening. We've got three of them tonight, and we are going to start off with Truckee River Day. So Lisa, if you would like to join me over at the podium.
Make sure we have the right line.
Yeah, Truckee River Day.
Awesome.
All right, with me is Lisa Wallace. I think she doesn't need an introduction, but just in case. All right, I will read the proclamation first. "Whereas the Truckee River, its tributaries, forests, meadows, and wetlands are beloved to local residents and visitors alike; and whereas the Truckee River watershed is impaired by 150 years of legacy impacts, such as timber harvesting, construction of the railroad, and other transportation corridors, gravel mining, grazing, and dams, resulting in the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the State of California designating the watershed as polluted; and whereas for 28 years, the Truckee River Day brought together hundreds of community members of all ages to work on watershed restoration projects in and around Truckee, reflecting the importance of the watershed and environment in our daily lives; and whereas the goal of the Truckee River Watershed Council is to continue the momentum of Truckee River Day while completing 50 large-scale restoration and protection projects in the next 10 years, so that even with growth and development, our water will be clean, our meadows and wetlands will be restored, our streams and creeks will have healthy populations of fish and birds and other wildlife, and our forests will be healthy enough to adapt to the threats of drought and disease; and whereas volunteers will be working on restoration projects in Cold Stream Canyon, on the Truckee River, at Donner Lake, Martis Wildlife Area, Lacy Meadow, and elsewhere in and around the Town of Truckee; and whereas the Truckee River Watershed Council is honoring the 28th anniversary with events such as the Truckee River Day at Granite Flampground, in addition to several restoration projects. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor of the Town of Truckee that we declare October 15, 2023, as the 28th Annual Truckee River Day and Fair, and congratulates the committed citizens of Truckee who join with the Truckee River Watershed Council on this day to protect and restore our beloved river and its tributaries." Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Romac, and thanks to everybody in the room. I recognize so many faces here who've come out to Truckee River Day over the past many, many years. I think the proclamation said it all. So the last thing I'll just say is to acknowledge the town staff, who this year are hosting one of the Truckee River Day projects, doing storm drain stenciling, dealt with our storm water management and our water quality. So again, thank you to the community, and thank you to the Town Council and town staff.
And thank you to Lisa for all your work on this day and every day for our Truckee River watershed. All right, up next, we have a proclamation to proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we have Karen Aaron with Tahoe Forest Hospital here with us. So come on up. Yeah. Be ready. "Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13, 2023, is Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 20 is National Mamogramraphy Day." We'll ask you to say all the medical words in a minute. "And whereas breast cancer is one of the most common kinds of cancer in women, with 85% of breast cancer occurring in patients with no family history, approximately 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas the good news is that many women can survive breast cancer, if found and treated with early detection from mammograms, there is a 5-year survival rate for 99% of patients diagnosed with localized breast cancer. And whereas there has been a 42% reduction in mortality rates from breast cancer from 1989 to 2020 due to earlier detection and improved treatments. And whereas Tahoe Forest Hospital District has performed over 5,000 mammograms in the past year, and women may receive mammograms with no out-of-pocket costs if covered by commercial insurance, Medicare, or Medi-Cal. And whereas the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer and to spread the word about mammograms so as to encourage communities, organizations, families, and individuals to get involved. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the Town of Truckee that October 2023 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13, 2023, is Metastasis Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 20, 23, is National Mamogramraphy Day in and throughout the Town of Truckee, and the mayor encourages all Truckee citizens to participate in proactive health screenings and to get a mammogram. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And feel free to say a few words.
Thank you for acknowledging the importance of prevention and mammograms, and on behalf of Tahoe Forest Hospital, I received the proclamation. I just want to also say that after 40 years at the hospital, believe it or not, I've spent the last 17 years at our cancer center. And so for those women who are diagnosed with breast cancer, we have really wonderful treatment and care close to home. And I can't say enough about our cancer center. It's a Commission on Cancer-accredited cancer center. We have worked very hard over the years to really take good care of our local community patients, and the hospital had enough foresight to see that this was a need, and it's been really an honor to be part of that. So thank you for supporting that.
And before we get to our next proclamation, I know Chief Renfro wanted to share a little bit about their Pink Patch Project.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this year is Pink Patch 2023. So this is something we do every year, and this is something that the local community can get behind in order to support this project. First, I want to start out with a quick little video. It's only a minute long about National Breast Cancer Foundation and awareness. So we'll go ahead and get started on that.
Each day, more than 700 women across the nation are diagnosed with breast cancer. But this number represents more than a statistic. It represents 700 realities shifted, 700 lives altered, 700 stories rewritten. You know her. She's your mother.
Okay.
Your daughter.
Woo-hoo, she's done.
Your coworker. Your friend. And she's more than her diagnosis. At National Breast Cancer Foundation, we do more than raise awareness. We meet patients' needs. We fill gaps in care. We support women when they need it most. But we don't do it alone. We're more than an organization. With your support, we're a community. Join us as we raise more than awareness, as we advocate for each other, as we ensure no one faces breast cancer alone. This October, join us as we raise hope and help women now.
Okay, so how can we help at a local level? So the Pink Patch Project is joined by all Nevada County law enforcement, from Grass Valley, Nevada City, Nevada County Sheriff's Department, probation, and new to this year is the Grass Valley Fire Department. So we sell these patches here, and you can buy them in bundles, and all proceeds go to the Jean Upshaw Cancer Center to support cancer research and efforts and provide assistance to local residents. So all of the funds here locally go to that cause. You can purchase these patches either tonight, which I only have Truckee PD ones, the only ones in my mind, or at Tahoe Forest Foundation located at 11075 Donner Pass Road. Each patch is $10. A challenge coin is $20. You can get the bundle pack, which is all five, or the huge bundle pack, which is with the Grass Valley Fire Department, and then the mega. So it goes to $65 all the way up to $74, including a challenge coin. So with that, that's it. If you guys, if anybody's interested, I'll be at the back table, and you can support the cause by purchasing a patch. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Renfro. And I see you're rocking the patches already, so we can see how good they look. All right, with that, we will move on to our final proclamation for the evening, and this is on National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'd like to invite Felly to come on up, because we are going to do something special this evening. I will read the proclamation, and then, since you heard how bad I am at pronouncing words, we are going to ask Felly to read the proclamation then in Spanish. So bear with us. It'll take a few minutes, but we're really excited that you're here. Come on up, stand next to me. Don't be shy. "Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15 through October 15 each year. The observation began in 1968 as one week..." The observation began in 1968 as one week, and in 1988 became the month celebration it is today. September 15th is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and September 18th respectively. And whereas this month highlights and celebrates the rich histories, cultures, arts, food, music, and traditions of people whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South American countries, while also recognizing that these nations are not homogeneous, and this month celebrates honors and pays tribute to all. And whereas the Hispanic population is 13% of our Truckee population and plays a vital role in our Truckee community. And whereas the town honors and recognizes the significant contributions of the Sierra Community House Prometora Program, a group of Latina women who provide education, outreach, and peer support to families in Truckee and Tahoe. The Prometoras are invaluable leaders in our region who strengthen the connections in our community through culturally relevant outreach. And whereas the Prometoras help bring vital health and social service to the Latinx community while also enriching the community by celebrating cultural customs through events such as the Dia del Niño, the Mexican Heritage Festival, and Dia de los Muertos. And whereas the town of Truckee is committed to recognizing Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx culture and heritage as an important component of the town identity and its inclusive community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee that September 15th through October 15th is National Hispanic Heritage Month and calls its observance to all residents. And I'll wait to present this, because you have the Spanish version.
Okay, I was a little...
Go ahead.
Proclamación. Considerando que el mes nacional de la herencia hispana se celebra en todo el país del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de cada año, la celebración comenzó en 1968 con una duración de una semana y no fue hasta 1988 que se celebra por un mes. El 15 de septiembre es importante porque es el aniversario de la independencia de Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, y Nicaragua. Además, México y Chile celebran sus días de independencia el 16 y el 18 de septiembre respectivamente. Y considerando que este mes destaca y celebra las ricas historias, culturas, artes, comida, música, y tradiciones de personas cuyos antepasados vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, y los países de América Central y del Sur, al mismo tiempo que reconoce que estas dos naciones no son homogéneas y que este mes celebra honra y rinde homenaje a todos. Y considerando que la población hispana representa el 13% de nuestra población de Truckee y desempeña un papel importante en nuestra comunidad, fuerza laboral y economía de Truckee. Y considerando... I just almost forgot. Que la ciudad honra y reconoce las importantes contribuciones del programa Prometoras de Sierra Community House, un grupo de mujeres latinas que brindan educación, divulgación, y apoyo entre pares a las familias de Truckee y la región de Tahoe. Las Prometoras son líderes invalables en nuestra región que fortalecen las conexiones en nuestra comunidad a través de actividades de divulgación y culturalmente relevantes. This is touching my heart, you guys, you can talk. Okay. So, considerando que las Prometoras ayudan a brindar servicios sociales y de salud importantes a la comunidad latina al tiempo que enriquecen a la comunidad al celebrar las costumbres culturales a través de los eventos como el Día del Niño, Festival de la Herencia Mexicana, y los Días de los Muertos. Y considerando que la ciudad de Truckee se compromete a reconocer la cultura y el patrimonio hispano latino, Latinx, y latino como un componente importante de la identidad de la ciudad y su comunidad inclusiva. Por lo tanto, la alcalde de la ciudad de Truckee, aquí presente, proclama del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes nacional de la herencia hispana y lo celebra a todos los residentes. That's it. Vengan a recibir su premio. Yeah.
Yes, if all the Prometoras want to come up.
Just like a photo.
Yeah, we'll take a picture. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you, just a few words, thank you. I am the community engagement manager for Sierra Community House. I've been leading and supporting this program for almost a decade. Just thank you for the partnership. Thank you to Erika, the town of Truckee, and all the organizations that support this really valuable work. And this is my team, so it touches my heart. Can you say something in Spanish, briefly? Is that good? Take it, take it. Then we'll repaste all the laws.
Well, gracias por el reconocimiento.
Yo quiero darle las gracias a Erika por todo el tiempo que nos ha apoyado, siempre ha creído en nosotros. Gracias.
Bueno, gracias por el apoyo de todos.
We'll take, yeah, we'll take a full group picture when everyone's done.
Thank you for everything.
Did everyone get a chance?
I was just saying, thank you so much for acknowledging the wonderful work that our Prometora team do. I do believe that bringing the community together comes with that cultural competence and, you know, that aspect of it, so thank you so much for this wonderful recognition.
Gracias a todos por este reconocimiento, realmente es importante para nosotros. Thank you, everyone, for this moment. I'm so excited. Thank you.
All right, now, in front. Picture time.
Photoshop so often. This is very...
Wonderful.
One, two, three.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. It was very nice to have everyone here. We do have two more presentations, and then we will open it up for comments or questions on any of the presentations. Up next, we have Mr. Rory O'Farrell with Tahoe Truckee Media with a presentation on Tahoe Truckee Media. Welcome, Rory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, town staff, Truckee neighbors, I'm Rory O'Farrell, manager of Tahoe Truckee Media. I've been associated with the station for 13 years. A lot of the time, you'll find me in that little booth in the back. Dan Martin, my associate, is in there now. And after 13 years back there, I'd finally decided, maybe we ought to do a little presentation. So it may be another 13 before you see me, so pay attention. I will be brief. We're not going to cover the whole 13 years. Tahoe Truckee Media began as Tahoe Truckee Community Television in 1999. As a public, educational, and government-access media center, TTM today is dedicated to free speech, serving the underserved voices in our community, and open, responsive government. To those ends, we operate Optimum Cable Channels 6 and 18, and in high-def, 106 and 118. Those channels can now also be seen 24/7 on our website, which is TahoeTruckeeMedia.org. And soon we plan to expand to Apple TV, Roku, and other over-the-top platforms. We're probably best known for our meeting coverage like this. A lot of the production that we do is for the high school, and we supplement that with programs from other media centers around the country, like Native Voices TV, Gay USA, Empowering Women Now, and the list is long. But we did bring along a video to show some of our local programming, so Kelly, if you would.
Handoff, burn bomb, we're on the right side. Now cuts it back up the middle, and he's going to go in. Touchdown Wolverines.
If you've ever watched a Truckee or North Tahoe High School athletic event telecast...
And we'll bring it up quick. Get the bounce pass to...
That was Tahoe Truckee Media. If you've watched coverage of the Truckee Town Council, Planning Commission, Truckee Tahoe Airport Board, or Tahoe Forest Hospital Board, that was TTM 2. You can see Good Morning Truckee on Tahoe Truckee Media.
Who else says a stump speech? Yes.
We're also there bringing you the Fourth of July Parade, Veterans Day festivities, ribbon cuttings, the holiday tree lighting, and of course, lots of weather. And we do this all with a full-time staff of two, plus an on-call engineer, a couple of announcers, and an ever-changing staff of volunteers and high school students. Oh, and let's not forget the Truckee Follies. We've been involved for years, but you've only seen those recordings if you've been a cast member.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Truckee Town Council Budget Workshop.
I'm afraid primetime is still not ready for the Follies. We of course applaud those present who were actually in that sketch and your good sense of humor. Public access media centers exist because dedicated citizens continue to fight for their survival. I serve on the National Board of Directors of the Alliance for Community Media, and it's a constant battle to maintain the viability of America's 1,600-peg media centers. While the National Cable Television Association, the Comcast's, and charters, and Verizons of this world would like to pull the plug on our non-commercial, nonprofit, local operations, when local media centers are forced to close, and that happens a lot, communities, especially rural, remote communities like Truckee edge closer and closer to a condition known as a news desert. Now, changes in advertising have already wrecked havoc on newspapers and other broadcast newsrooms, and as staff shrinks, so does local coverage. Right here, we've seen our local paper in recent years go from twice a week to once. Now, I'm a big supporter of our local papers and broadcast media, but as fewer journalists are telling the stories of our communities, often what fills the void is handouts and press releases and self-serving puffery. So what can you do to help Tahoe Truckee Media continue to serve and expand our coverage in this market? One would be to support the Protect Community Television Act and encourage elected representatives to do the same. The cable operators are trying to claw back the money and services that they are required to provide to municipalities like Truckee, requirements that were established in the Cable Act of 1984, and they've been trying to repeal that ever since. How can you support Tahoe Truckee Media right now? Join us in celebrating Free Speech Week. Every October this year, it starts on the 16th, and part of that is Community Media Day, which is October 20th. And finally, please remember Tahoe Truckee Media November 28th, Giving Tuesday. And then, just watch us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rory, and it's nice to see you in a blazer. I think that's the fanciest I've ever seen you dress before. You look great. All right, we have one final presentation, our town manager report from Jen Callaway.
Great, good evening. Two quick updates tonight, if anybody is looking for something to do tomorrow evening and you haven't already signed up to do the last Truckee Litter Core of the season, please join everybody down at KTKE radio station on Donner Pass Road, 5:30 PM, and we'll start the last cleanup for this year. And then also, next Friday, if you're looking for a Friday the 13th activity to do, Sierra Community House in partnership with the town of Truckee, 2-on-1 Connecting Point, and the Rec District, and the Hospital District are hosting a free swim event and free swim evening for our community. We'll have some information on community resources, snacks, blood pressure screening, blood sugar screening, but we hope everybody can come out and just enjoy a fun, free evening at our community pool. And that's our Friday the 13th activities. If you're not superstitious, come on down, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much, Jen. All right, that concludes our presentation, so if anyone has any questions or comments, we'll start to my left, Councilmember Henderson.
None, thank you.
Councilmember Zabriskie.
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Polavy. Councilmember Clovestead.
Great presentations tonight. I'll just say, amazingly, Truckee River Day, they've filled up all of their spots for volunteerism, which seldom happens. I think that's something to celebrate, but if people are interested, they can still join in the annual Truckee River Day Fair, starting at, I believe, 1:00 to 4:00 PM at the Granite Flap Campground. It's a very fun, educational opportunity.
Thank you very much. And no further comments. Thank you to all of our community members. It's always nice to recognize folks doing good things in our community. So with that, we will open up public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comments on any of the presentations, feel free to come on up. Seeing none, we will close public comment. So we will now move on to our consent calendar. We've got a few items tonight. I will read through them first. Our first item, 6.1, minutes from the September 26 regular meeting. Item 6.2, Mills Act Historic Preservation Contract Agreements. Item 6.3, Amendment to the GAN Appropriations Limit for Fiscal Year 2324. Item 6.4, Adoption of Ordinance Update for Board and Commission Appointment Process and Attendance. Item 6.5, Approval of Contract with Equity and Wellness Institute for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Action Plan. Item 6.6, Grant Award to the Town of Truckee from the California Department of Parks and Recreation, Division of Boating and Waterways. Item 6.7, Appointment of Councilmember Zabriskie as Council Representative to the Tahoe Truckee Homeless Advisory Committee. Item 6.8, Letter of Support on behalf of the Truckee Donner Land Trust to Utilize Land and Water Conservation Funding for Acquisition of Marthys Valley Headwaters Property. Would any council members like to pull any items from consent? No, seeing none, would staff like to pull any items from consent?
No, Mayor.
And would any members of the public like to pull any items from consent this evening? Seeing none, well, we will bring it back. Vice Mayor Polavy.
I'll make a motion. I just want to recognize, A, this is a really cool consent agenda, so thank you. Thanks to Councilmember Zabriskie for picking up the slack. Very much appreciate that as well, and to the land trust as well for that really fascinating acquisition, if it is so successful. So really cool, all around. With that, I will move to approve consent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, up next, we have item 7.1.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, staff is requesting that we pull this item tonight. We had some last-minute determination, and we need a little bit more time to work through it, so we'll bring that back at a later date. But since it was agendized, we would still like to open this up for public comment.
Thank you very much. So this is item 7.1, the Short Term Rental Ordinance Cleanup. So as we just heard, we're going to pull the item from tonight, we'll hear it at a future date, but if anyone is here who would like to make public comment on this item, you're welcome to come on up to the podium. As I mentioned earlier, please state your name, and you'll have three minutes to share your comments, so don't be shy, come on up.
Give me a second here. Good evening, Truckee. My name is Coleman Bowen. I own multiple properties here in Truckee, including Sunset Inn, mobile home, and RV Park. I currently have over 40 long-term tenants here in Truckee. They're all hardworking, they're great people. I also have a few Airbnbs. I own numerous RVs. I've built multiple tiny homes, and I love the recreation industry. I've invested my life in it. The proposed changes to the STR... The proposed changes to the STR ordinance failed to take into account that recreational vehicles, motorhomes, travel trailers, truck campers, and camp trailers are not the problem, nor are they the solution to the town's housing problem. Do we really want our workforce living in campers, RVs, truck campers? Is that what we want for Truckee? I don't really think so personally. Currently, as of this afternoon, there are over 160 Zillow rental listings available with an additional 60-plus Craigslist listings for long-term housing here in Truckee. I've seen countless room shares, house shares, et cetera, offered all over Truckee social media over the past few months. The pandemic housing crunch is over. Have we become so hostile towards recreation and tourism that we, what will drive, sorry, excuse me. If we've become so hostile towards recreation and tourism, what will drive Truckee through the next recession? Recreation and tourism are the primary drivers of our economy. RV parks, KOAs, campgrounds, also defined as special occupancy parks, which is included in this next, the proposed ordinance, are designed for commercial use on a daily, nightly, or monthly basis. Truckee is built around a culture of recreation, RVing, boating, fishing, and vacationing. These special occupancy parks are designed as an affordable option for families to come and recreate on a short-term basis. If we eliminate all rental RVs in Truckee, aren't we limiting the less fortunate people's ability to come and visit Truckee and maybe aspire to own a home here? Isn't that the most affordable way to even come here, is to come camping? And if you can't afford to buy an RV, then you rent one. So they can't come here now? To that end, if we make rental RVs illegal in Truckee, how would we enforce any of those rules on rental RVs visiting the town? Are we going to, are our RV parks going to turn them away? Are they going to go park on the side of the road and sleep there because they're not allowed in campgrounds and RV parks here in Truckee because they rented an RV? It seems to me that the most suitable location for RVs is in special occupancy parks, and the most suitable option for any form of RV is for short-term use, as they were built. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to make a public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Thank you for that public comment, and we will bring this item back to council at a future date. All right, with that, we will move to item 7.2. This is the Truckee Home Access Program, THAP Local Business Application and Guideline Revisions.
Back up. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. We are very excited tonight because the town has received our first application from a business for the Truckee Home Access Program. Excuse me. And in working through that application to bring to you to council tonight, we determined that there were a few modifications to the program guidelines that we would like to recommend so that the program fits with the intent of the business purchaser component of THAP and provides a little bit more flexibility. So I'll first walk through what those proposed changes are to the guidelines, and then walk you through the application that was received. The first change to the guidelines is a proposed, oh, we don't have the slides up, that would help. There we go. The first proposed change is a change to the definition of owner, as well as qualified owner. So staff are proposing to add to the owner definition a person, local business, local businesses, or developers who acquire ownership interest in the property. In turn, qualified owner would refer to owners who are qualified to purchase a home and reside in the home. So individual participants in the program who would qualify under the local workforce requirements, as well as the AMI requirements, would be considered qualified owners. It doesn't mean that local businesses and developers cannot participate in the program, but they wouldn't fall under that definition. The second change is to the funding and payment for deed restrictions. We've added that an individual that owns a local business, a family trust with a trustee that owns a local business, or an entity that is in common ownership of any amount with the local business can apply for the Truckee Home Access Program as a local business. And in talking this through with our business applicant and thinking through it in more detail, realized that there could be a number of reasons, whether it's financial reasons, legal reasons, why a business does not want to purchase a home under the business's name, but under the name of an associated business, under a trust, under the owner's individual name, and that sort of thing. So we recommend providing a little bit of additional flexibility there. And then, under the tenant eligibility, in thinking through business buyers who would be purchasing for the primary purpose of renting out the home, staff have recommend changing the tenant household employment requirement. The current guidelines require that one eligible, one household member meet the local workforce eligibility requirement. Staff are recommending changing that to be consistent with our least-of-locals program and requiring that at least 50% of the adult household members meet the local workforce requirements. The current guidelines state that a THAP unit can only be resold to a qualified individual buyer. Staff's recommendation is to allow that a THAP owner may sell the THAP unit to any THAP-qualified buyer or qualified local business. So that would allow that a home that is purchased by a business could be sold to another business or to an individual, and so on. Alternatives, if council would like to consider alternatives to that, council could require that you, if you purchase as an individual, you only sell to an individual. Purchase as a business, only sell to a business. Or if you purchase as an individual, you can sell to an individual, but businesses could sell to either. Our thinking through that process, a question for council to consider is, do we care if it's going to, if all the houses end up going to businesses or individuals? Do we want to provide the maximum flexibility? Based off of some of the thoughtful council questions received today, staff are recommending one additional change to the program guidelines, and that is to the definition of a seller. And we are recommending changing to a definition that the seller is the owner of a non-THAP housing unit who deed restricts the unit through THAP at the time of sale. So that would remove the word "household" from the entity selling the unit, because in some cases, a seller may not be a household. It could be a business, or a trust, et cetera. And also removes the requirement that the seller must be, currently be using the home as a primary residence. So those are our recommended changes to the program guidelines. Just a quick summary of our business application that was received. The application was received by William Greeno at Quality Automotive Services. Quality Automotive Services is a Truckee business that has 11 employees and therefore meets the local business definition in the program. The home is proposed to be purchased by the Greeno Revocable Trust, which is an existing trust. The THAP unit to be purchased is a three-bedroom, two-bathroom home in Glenshire. It's within a half-mile of Glenshire Elementary. The owner, or the purchaser plans to rent to three different tenants at $1,000 per bedroom with a maximum rent allowed under the THAP guidelines of $6,981, so significantly below that maximum allowed. The purchase price of the home is $660,000. An appraisal is currently underway, and the THAP payment about, payment amount based off of that purchase price is estimated to be $105,600. If the appraisal comes in below the purchase price, then that amount could be adjusted downward. The amount is calculated as the lower of 16% of the purchase price or the appraised value. The applicant is currently under contract, and financing is secured and hoping to close in a few weeks. So with that, staff's recommendation to council is to approve the application and a payment not to exceed $105,600 for the purchase of this home. As a reminder, our individual buyers are approved at the staff level with a loan committee. Business and developers under our current program guidelines are brought to council for consideration, which is why we're considering this tonight. With that, our two recommendations tonight are to approve the changes to the THAP program guidelines and to approve the THAP for local business application for the Greeno Revocable Trust and authorize a payment of not to exceed $105,600.
Thank you very much, Hillary. All right, with that, we will start with questions. We're going to start on this side, Councilmember Clovestad. And I will acknowledge that Bill and Sheila Greeno are here. So if you're open to questions, I would say if we have questions for them, we can ask them questions at this time as well. Councilmember Clovestad?
I don't have any further questions. I had a discussion with Jen earlier and feel very confident in the program.
Vice Mayor Polavy?
Yeah, I just have one. Why do we care what the intended, intended rent rate is going to be as long as it's under what the maximum rent allowed through the program is? Like, why are we asking that question?
It's not a sort of a hard and fast rule. It's because this is discretionary for council. We thought that that might be information that council would be interested in knowings, or what the intended use of those units is.
Like, if we get competitive at some point, then that might be, you're very noble rent rate, thank you. I'm just asking the question why we would care, basically. Because we don't govern that, and so it's nothing we're going to, generally, it would be an objective thing, would be my point.
It is objective. I think we have varying degrees of information that people like to have and absorb while you're making decisions. So we're trying to provide you with all of the information we can.
Got it. Okay. And so potentially, if there were three applications in front of us and we had budget restrictions, that information might be more pertinent? Is that sort of the thinking?
For some members of the council, it could be.
I see. Great, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Councilmember Zabriskie?
Why is it that Mr. Greeno can't just participate in the THAP program as an individual? Or as a trustee, without having to go through all these changes?
Having not looked into Mr. Greeno's personal finances, I don't know if he would qualify, but the individual purchaser requires that the individual be income-qualified, and there's a maximum asset cap in order to participate. And it also requires, or it does not require, but the general direction for that program is that it's for purchase by the, for the purchaser to occupy the home, although it does allow for rental with town approval.
So?
So he may not be income or asset-qualified. If he has too many assets, then he would not be able to participate as an individual.
So his intention is to occupy the residence?
No, his intention in this case is to rent out the residence.
Okay, so?
He would not be permitted to occupy himself.
Okay, so?
Just maybe for the sake of everybody listening in the public, if you are an individual buyer, you have to have 30% or less of your liquid assets. So that's likely a disqualifier for businesses, just by the nature of business, or business owners. Or it could be, I guess I should say, and then income restriction is to 45% of AMI, which could be another disqualifier for a business owner.
Okay, then he intends to rent it to someone who is income-qualified?
Correct.
Why can't he do that as an individual?
He would not be eligible to participate in the THAP program as an individual because we have an asset cap and an income cap. So if he, if he has assets in excess of that limit, he could not participate as an individual buyer.
Why can't we apply these caps to the renter?
So I think what you're asking is, we probably, we maybe could go back and revisit the program and have a different pathway where it qualifies as the renter. I'm not sure that you get to a different place, though. I think the outcome is the same. And I think when we originally brought this program to you about a year ago, we were intentionally trying to create different pathways and flexibilities for whether it was a buyer that was going to reside in the home, a business, or a developer. So yeah, we could have modified that maybe in those discussions, but we created these three different pathways, and this is the business outlet.
Okay. The problem I'm having is, I understand this, Quality Automotive is the name of a business owned by an S corporation that is in turn owned by Mr. and Mrs. Greeno. And so it's not really the business that's buying this property. It's Mr. Greeno and his wife are putting the house into their family trust. Is that factually accurate?
That is factually accurate. He is, he would be the owner of, the trust would be the owner of the home, and the business is a separate legal entity owned by the Greenos.
Okay, my concern is not the end result, it's how we're getting there. And so it comes back to maybe this program should actually be expanded, and we shouldn't be making this distinction about local businesses. Because I think this is, I can save it for deliberation.
Yeah, I was going to say, this sounds more like deliberation. So I think, if you've got more questions, continue on.
Just merely context for my questions, then. I had asked why a partnership, among other entities, ownership entities, is not included, and the response was, I think, that staff at the time didn't feel it was necessary, or something to that effect. Is there any logical reason for excluding partnerships?
No.
So I think more broadly, each business, just like each developer, comes back to council for consideration. And we can certainly, I don't think we're opposed to adding partnerships, but each one of these, you'll hear, because there's so many different, unique circumstances with business owners that we're, we're trying to provide as much flexibility as we can, understanding individual, like this circumstance, and adjusting based on this one. I think the next one might be very different if we get a second business owner.
Right, right. So maybe, would it be wise, possibly, to consider just changing it to, instead of trying to identify specific types of business structures, to simply say that any legal entity engaged in a business enterprise with three employees in Truckee could qualify?
I don't think we're opposed to that language.
Yeah, you did ask earlier about unincorporated associations. I would be a little bit wary of that one, since they have all the structure of a jellyfish. There's just nothing to an unincorporated association, so it's hard to figure out what their assets are, who'd be ultimately responsible for compliance with an agreement signed by an unincorporated association? I mean, because any group of two or more people can call themselves an association. But other than that, I think it could work.
But they would also need to have three employees.
Yes, and it's possible to run a business as an unincorporated association, but it's a terrible idea.
Right. Right, and the assets wouldn't matter, would it? If they're a local business, we're not basing limits on their assets.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah. Assets are only for individual purchases.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember Zabriskie?
Not now.
Okay.
I think I would caution that if you were to direct us to come back with a revision where this goes down a different pathway, where we're basing it off of renters, it is possible a renter could have inherited money that puts them above the asset limit, but still wouldn't be able to afford housing outside of a THAP program or assistance. So the business path does provide alternatives, or another pathway to get those people in secured housing.
Right, right. And just to make sure, it's correct, there really is no connection between placing this house in the THAP house in the THAP program and the operation of Quality Automotive. We're just... It's just the fact that Mr. Greeno and his wife, through their S corp, own another company that operates Quality Automotive under that name.
I believe that that is factually accurate. And the intent behind the business program is it does provide a pathway for business owners to participate in providing workforce housing, which in many cases would be workforce housing for their own employees. So that's really the intent of this program.
Yes. But it's only... It's less than the full complement of businesses that's allowed to participate in the program, and it's only because the person applying for the THAP program happens to own a business that they get treated differently than an individual who wants to participate.
I'm gonna use some of your lawyer language and ask you to rephrase that, because I'm not sure I'm following.
I think you're right. I mean, if you want me... I think what you're saying, Councilmember Zabriski, is yes, you're correct. There's a different standard that they are being held to than a traditional THAP application. And I think the question I was gonna ask, and I answered it myself, and I think this might help you, too, is, well, who cares what happens when the business changes ownership? Right? That's the next stage. We don't care because we're getting a deed restriction, is my own answer to that, right? And so what we're doing is we're using just different tools to allow different entities to create the deed restrictions through whatever means we can possibly adhere to, and this happens to be just a different pathway to do that. So I think I understand exactly where you're going with your questioning, and I don't know if that simple question, like, yeah, what happens when they don't own the business in 10 years? Like, yeah, it's no longer a business deed restriction, we're just sort of pulling it from a different pot of money and allowing a different set of requirements to govern how we get that deed restriction. Because if we were only to rely on one level, we may or may not ever get there, right? That's sort of the issue, and we have a desire from the business community to help our own. That's part of our responsibility to do that. So that's sort of how I've come to get there.
That's why I voted in favor of this before.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, one last thing. I'm wondering if you can help me if there's a way of solving one of the problems I had, understanding this whole definition. We're defining these different kinds of business owners, corporations, individuals, sole proprietorships, all these different specific types of business structures as a local business. Is there another way of describing business owners than calling them local businesses? Do you understand the problem? What we're talking about is local business owners having special rules applied to them, different rules applied to them. It's not the business that's getting... That's applying to sell a house or buy a house. It's the business owner.
So would you... Is your recommendation, then, to just rephrase it as the local business?
Business owner.
It could be the business. It could be a business. The corporation could be the business owner, and/or it could be an entity in the way that it's being presented tonight, separating it from the business. But there's no reason why a corporation or an LLC who owns a business can't also proceed under this program, right, Mr. Attorney?
That's right.
So I don't think that's necessary.
And I would... Like, Councilmember Zabriski, I feel like we're getting deep into this here, and if it's...
Yeah.
If it's... It would help you get to supporting something or not supporting or making a decision, then it makes sense, I think, to keep digging into the semantics of it, but otherwise, it might make sense to...
The semantics, to me, are important, because I find it confusing, and because this is before us, I'm looking for a way to improve the language we're using so it's clear for all of us to understand.
Would it help to add language that said "local business," such as, and list some of them, or "local business owner"?
Local business owner.
But what if we coupled them together? So that in case of it being, name a local business that wants to buy it under their LLC, that's a pathway, but if it's an individual business owner, that's also defined as such?
It would be as simple on number... I want to get your feedback on this. It would be as simple as on H. Instead of saying "local business," say "local business owner." Or it'd be better "owner of a local business," to avoid an ambiguity there, but...
Yeah.
Owner of a local business, then you're talking about a corporation, a sole proprietorship, a government entity, or something along those lines.
So this is where I am gonna jump in, where this is more deliberation. I think we've got to...
I want to find out if staff has any concerns about changing the title of H to owner of a local business, based on their expertise.
Staff's recommended change to the local business to... Would allow both an individual or trust or associated business in common ownership or the business itself to purchase a home through the THAP program. If we change that definition to "local business owner" or "owner of a local business," my concern was with... Is that a local business itself would no longer be eligible to participate, unless I'm misunderstanding your question?
The business... All the businesses have owners, so as long as it's the owner who can participate...
They don't. They have officers, not owners. There's businesses that have officers versus owners.
I don't know if this will help, but I think that Councilmember Zabriski's suggestion to only have it refer to local business owners precludes the possibility, as Councilmember Poli said, of having the business itself be the entity that owns the property. That's why Jen... Well, the way it's worded, I think what you're suggesting is that. What Jen has suggested is to have it be local business owner or local business, so as to encompass both types of ownership.
I don't know what business can acquire property.
Any business.
It's gonna be the owner of the business, right? It's Quality Automotive?
A business can own property, certainly.
But it has an ownership structure.
But the ownership structure doesn't own the property. The business could own the property, or the ownership structure could own the property directly. But there's no reason that a business couldn't own property. And there might be reasons to do that, such as tax planning.
And liability and risk, and, I mean, I could go on and on.
So...
And it sounds like, Councilmember Zabriski, you were asking, are there concerns with using this language? I'm hearing there are concerns with just saying "local business owner," so...
I'm saying a business, per se, is not an entity. I've never heard of it.
But I'm gonna rely on the town...
So I guess the action for you tonight is to determine what you want to do with the Greeno revocable trust application, so we can help them either move forward or not.
Yeah.
And if you want to see some... Have further conversation about this, we could re-agendize it with other possible changes.
Thank you for indulging me for the semantic impasse.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Okay, thank you. I think I have just one. So Hillary, clarify for me, tenant eligibility previously was just that one adult in the household had to work 30 hours or greater within the TTUSD school boundary, and staff is proposing changing it to at least 50% over the age of 18?
That's correct.
So I guess my question is, let's say we have a local business, and they... You know, we have a family, and it's, you know, two adults, and I'll say a kid, but like, let's say, you know, over 18, but they've come back from college, or, you know, something happened. And are we saying, then, if one of those full-time... One of those adults worked, you know, full-time within TTUSD, the other one didn't. Let's just say the other one, like, commutes to Reno or something. And then we're saying, because they now have their kid, their 19-year-old kid, living at home, they're not gonna qualify for this program? Under this new eligibility criteria as a tenant?
I believe that is correct, yes. It would be 50% of the adults over 18 would need to qualify.
So I'll save this for deliberation, but I do think this is one that we might want to... I understand the intent is to have more workforce members actually being housed, and I will also just say that I would rather not lose that family, like, to Reno or Sacramento entirely, if someone like the Greenos with a three-bedroom, you know, could... Or pick your business, could house at least one workforce member and keep that family in our community. So maybe it's just something for deliberation, if my fellow council members want to indulge that.
Thank you. No further questions? This is just more out of curiosity. Can you remind us how the rent restriction is set? Because you said the max rent would be 6,900. It's a percentage of AMI, is that correct?
It is the maximum AMI allowed under the deed restrictions, or in this case, 245, of a household size of the number of bedrooms plus one. So for a three-bedroom home, it would be for a household size of four, the AMI of 245, and it's 30% of that amount. It's a little bit complicated.
I was gonna say, it's very clear and easy.
Yes, got it. That just seems awfully high, and glad to hear they're planning on 1,000 per bedroom. All right, with that, no further questions. We will open it up to public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment on this item, you're welcome to come up to the podium. Please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Councilmembers, mayor, thank you. I'd just like to commend staff. We've worked together a couple times now, and they've been really great and flexible, and I think moving this program forward in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back up here for deliberation. Councilmember Clovstad.
Okay. Well, I think I want to volley it over to the other side to see where we want to go with this. I'm very satisfied with the proposed changes from staff. I thank my fellow council members for the one additional clarification and proposed change, and I am very, very excited to approve the THAP for the Greeno revocable trust in the not-to-exceed amount of 105,600. And thank you so much for considering this and bringing more workforce into our community.
Thank you. So you would like to hear from Councilmember Henderson before you weigh in on the change to the adult income?
Yeah. I'd like to understand what your proposal is, because I understand your concern and feel similarly, yet I also understand what we're trying to accomplish here. And in this particular approval, it may not be as applicable. I feel... And then on the other topic, the semantics, I feel the language is clear and encompasses all the possibilities of business ownership. So I'm not as concerned about the semantics of that as Councilmember Zabriski is.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna go over to Councilmember Henderson, then, if you'd like to elaborate a little on your thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I think it really was just wanting to kind of take a pulse of, you know, I know, you know, obviously workforce housing is our priority in making sure we're housing as many of our workers, and you're right, maybe for this particular case, Councilmember Clovstad, it's, you know, relevant to less of an extent than, for example, if it was, you know, like, a four-bedroom or five-bedroom, a larger house, where those rooms could go to, you know, multiple different tenants. So I don't know if there's a way to bifurcate that. That might be overly complicating things, but I just... I think my concern sort of remains that I'd like to retain as much of our workforce here, and sometimes that includes families, right? And we have to be flexible and allow for that. I think otherwise, we risk, you know, potentially alienating some of our local workers who have families who could have then participated in this program.
Mayor Romack, if I could provide one clarification, I'm just looking back at the language in the guidelines. I think I provided a simplified version on the slide, but the language that we have in there is... Must be at least 50% of the people over 18 who are not full-time students. I just wanted to highlight that that is already built into the language we have here, in case that helps alleviate any of the concerns.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Yeah, I'll just add for me, I don't think that does, because especially with how expensive housing is now, we have so many of our... You know, I'll still call them our youth, like, early to mid-20s, they're not in school anymore, and they cannot afford to live anywhere except to come back and live with their families. So I appreciate that clarification, Hillary, and I think it doesn't quite address my concern. But again, understand the intent if this is where council wants to go with this particular eligibility.
Thank you. And Councilmember Henderson, while you have the mic, do you want to just weigh in generally if you're approving of the other items?
Yeah, I'm satisfied with the other proposed changes with just the one that I've really noted. And I also just really want to applaud Bill and Sheila. I mean, you guys are stepping up for our local workforce and for our community and being the first ones to go, like, go through this application process. And being the first ones sort of out the gate is always hard. It's always harder, because you have to kind of navigate it, and I'm just really grateful that you were willing to take that on.
Thank you. All right, back this way, Councilmember Clovstad. Now that you've heard more, do you want to wait for other folks to weigh in? Okay. Vice Mayor Poli.
Sure. So I'll just start by saying I support the action in front of us that staff has proceeded with. I support approving THAP for the Greeno revocable trust. Thank you very much. I'm glad that you are now the poster child. You'll make a really good one, should this be approved, and hopefully help others through the maze that sometimes some of this stuff can be, especially as you try to do things through your business, but also protect the way that your business also needs to operate in other arenas and not creating conflict within your different business entities. I'm gonna disagree with Councilmember Henderson's proposal for a number of reasons, but most importantly, I think that the 50% is actually most appropriate to apply, especially in cases like this. Because what we have to be careful of is if we're gonna be awarding public dollars to preserve housing, we have to ensure that that housing is going to the people it is intended to serve. I'm not disagreeing with you that family members aren't worthy and valuable people that should be served, but in this case and in other cases, we're trying to serve either existing local workforce or future local workforce, and especially in a situation like this, when the business is going to be the... Or the trust is going to be the owner, and we don't have that direct connection from the ownership to the deed restriction. So in the case of individual purchasers, that's a much easier situation to manage. We can manage that. They own the deed restriction as they're purchasing the house. In this case, if we didn't have that guideline, there's nothing to say that... And not that they would do this, that the business entity would say, sure, I can rent out to one local workforce person, but I have a three-bedroom, so I'm gonna choose... I'm gonna charge my employee 1,000 bucks. It's gonna be a great deal for them, but I'm gonna charge these other four people in here, you know, up to that maximum amount, because they don't work here in the community. So in that case, that, to me, is a detriment to the program. So I don't see what benefit there would be to changing that threshold to a different amount. I think 50% is important, especially in cases like this, and I see it being more easily achieved in the individual proposals and almost the need for it in these business and developer proposals. And so that's why I do support the changes in front of us as written tonight with the guidelines, as presented, without going into further semantics, which I think I've already done. But we basically... And just to... As if Councilmember Zabriski chooses to bring it up, most businesses have multiple LLCs, corporations. I don't know how many you have, but, you know, in one of the questions, they have a DBA. I have a DBA as well, under a single corporation. If I were to open another business, guess what? I'm gonna open another corporation or another LLC, and that's generally how businesses operate, to minimize exposure, risk, debt, tax burden. generally how businesses operate to minimize exposure, risk, debt, tax burden. There's a million reasons why we do that. So it's important. It's an important tool. And I think being flexible within this, you know, I don't think we thought about how a business would manage a residential unit. I know I've spoken about it in private with my own people many times. And I'm like, no, that's not going to work so well. So this actually is a great example. And I applaud you guys for putting it together this way. And I applaud staff for understanding how all of that does need to work together to be successful. So that's all from me.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Zabriski?
The example that Vice Mayor Pallavi gave is enough to, at least this evening, agree with him on councilmember Henderson's proposal. On another occasion, I might be persuaded otherwise, but at least for tonight, that's my feeling on that. Vice Mayor Pallavi's other remarks about the way business owners operate is in accord with my own experience. And what I find fascinating about the example we have here tonight on the application from the Greenos is the shortcomings of what we've drafted because we're going through this fiction, these machinations suggesting that somehow the fact that he's a business owner means he's, should get some kind of special advantage over a non-business owner. And all that's happening here is he's transferring the property into his family trust. It's, it's not related to his business. And we're making these funny revisions specifically to shoehorn him, his project into the code because it's so good despite the way we wrote the code. So we're just going to change the code. And next thing that's come along, well, we're going to have a general partner come in. And we're going to need to change this to allow partnerships. And it's going to be the same thing. He happens to be a partner that owns a business in Truckee that has three employees, and he wants to put his home into a family trust, move into another home, and he'll rent that home, his original home deed restricted to some local workers. We should do away with this fiction and this was essentially a sham and call things the way they are. And I, I hope we can move in that direction. This is a new code and we're just out of the gate on it. And there's a lot of wording improvements we could make that would make it clear for applicants and more equitable for people in our community. And so they wouldn't have to create a family trust in order to get under this local business form to get into that program. So that's a long dialogue about how I think we need to revisit it. Other than that, I'm ready to go with staff recommendation reluctantly.
So you're supporting staff's recommendation tonight and moving forward with this support of this business?
Yes, not enthusiastically, but I'm ready to move on.
Okay. Councilmember Clovedad, do you want to weigh in on your thoughts on changing the metrics? Or you want to leave them as is based on staff's recommendation?
I still share the concern. I'm just thinking about situations where you have, and I know there's been quite a few in our community where, especially during COVID, their kids didn't go away to college. They stayed home and some of them just got jobs and some of them took classes at community college. And it certainly don't want to create a situation where those have to leave the community. I think where we have it now is really good, but now we've got kind of two placeholders of things that we could ask staff to contemplate. And if they could navigate a more satisfactory, more satisfying, more satisfying language to bring it back at that time. But I think what we have is, is what we need to move forward with.
Thank you. I will weigh in. Thank you to the Greenos for, again, being the guinea pig on this. It's great, again, to go through this process. And thank you to staff for being, again, creative and working on things. And yes, we are going to have different situations for a lot of our businesses because as we heard from Vice Mayor Pallavi, a lot of businesses run differently. But I think this is an exciting opportunity and another way that we're unlocking homes and deed restricting homes for our workforce. So I'm all for staff's recommendation. And I appreciated Vice Mayor Pallavi's reasoning behind staying with the 50% of adults need to be employed in our local workforce. Because I do see that this is, you know, it's slightly different. We're dealing with the business owner who is renting rather than a homeowner who is tied to the house in a different way. So I do feel more comfortable going with staff's recommendation on this one. So with that, I would entertain a motion. I think I'm hearing support for moving forward with staff's recommendation. Who would like to make a motion?
I will move that we approve the changes to THAP guidelines and approve the THAP for the Greeno revocable trust.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And Steph, I think you heard some things to think about for future and to keep in mind for our next application. So however you, Jen, did you have any comments on that or?
No, I was just going to add while Alfred comes up that I think we did hear some good comments. You know, hopefully we'll have more of these. It'll be coming back and maybe some other changes to the program. And that's part of the iteration of a new program that we're developing and how to make it easier and simpler and clearer for everybody to understand. So, thank you.
And I will add to Jen's comments that we are signing on House seven and eight tomorrow. We are, we have House nine in the pipeline as individual buyer, and we're hopeful that this will close as either House nine or 10.
Great job. Very exciting. Thank you very much. All right, we will move to item 7.3, the Transportation Public Opinion Survey update. And I don't think your mic is.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of Town Council, Alfred Knotts, Transportation Program Manager. And I do have a slight change, just one little edit. So I do have to pull this up. And Charles Heath should be on the Zoom call also.
I'm here. Can everyone hear me?
There he is.
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great.
All right. Thank you for your patience. All righty. So we're here to discuss agenda item 7.3, coming back before you. And this is related to the Transportation Public Opinion Survey that was authorized by council in August of this year as part of our work program, also included in the 2324 budget as well. This is to evaluate kind of public sentiment and opinion as it relates to potential transportation sales tax, also to gauge kind of just overall community values also. But also how it relates to Measure V as kind of a baseline revenue source right now that is, is set to expire in 2028. And I'll give a little background on that. So Measure V, it was passed as Measure A in 1998. And Dan, correct me if there's anything that I miss, misspeak to here. But it is a half percent sales tax and approved with approximately 72% approval rating at the time. It was reauthorized at the same rate at a half percent in 2008 with approximately 84% approval. And again, these are subjected to the supermajority rule of two thirds. It generates approximately 3.5 million today's economy and economic climate. It is eligible for capital operations and maintenance specific to, to road rehabilitation and reconstruction. It is set to expire in 2028. The ballot language, I will not read this verbatim here, but again, it does lay out the specific eligibility and what the town can use these funds for. And obviously goes through a rather rigorous and robust and transparent process as part of not only the budgeting process, but also an oversight committee as well. Examples of projects that historically have been funded by Measure V, this goes to a lot of our annual paving and drainage projects, reset striping projects, bridge maintenance projects. It has paid for class two bike lanes when it's done in conjunction with the annual paving and drainage projects. And then also in our CIP right now, it's identified to go fund or to provide funding to changeable message signs, similar to what you see on Donner Pass Road by the lake over there by the state park that was just done by the roundabout by Coldstream. Here, again, just another example that kind of shows again, the overall network of what this has been funding over time. The town has a pretty significant inventory of roadways and different roadway classifications, but done a very, very fine job of keeping up on the, the maintenance needs, a lot to do with, and thankful to Measure V and the voters. So we do have Charles Heath on here. Charles cannot see the slides, I believe. So we're going to see how well we are tandem here. I've done enough of these to be enough dangerous, but also dangerous enough to know or enough of these to not know, to speak to Charles's skillset and his scientific scientists in psychological science. So I will pass this over to Charles. And Charles, we are on your cover slide right now of slide one.
Okay, thank you, Alfred. And I'll try to be clear which slide I'm speaking to so we can stay synced up. Good evening. I'm Charles Heath, a partner with Team Civics. We've served as the town's advisors on a number of different revenue measures over the last couple of decades. And we're pleased to be here tonight to present the results of our recent public opinion survey among voters in the town to look at various transportation issues and funding options. I will note that I worked on this survey in collaboration with Dr. Tim McClarny from True North Research, who you all know from past survey projects in Truckee. He's currently on a well-deserved vacation, which is why I'm standing in for him to share the poll results tonight. And then at the end of the polling presentation, I will offer some thoughts on potential strategies and next steps where we take this from here. So Alfred, if you'll go to the next slide, which is the purpose of the study. So as Alfred mentioned, you know, Measure V has been in place now since 2008, and it is set to expire in 2028. So the primary purpose of this study was to determine if renewing Measure V funding is feasible. And when we say feasible, meaning that if we were to put the measure on the ballot, we feel confident that it would receive the two thirds vote required for approval. Beyond just the basic feasibility of the proposal, we also wanted to look at how we create a measure that is consistent with the community's priorities and sensitivities. Obviously, that changes a lot. And 2008 was a long time ago. So we wanted to look at how the measure might need to evolve to stay consistent with the community's priorities. And then we also wanted to look at community awareness so that we understand the information that would be helpful to communicate to the public as they consider a potential vote on this topic. So if we can go to the next slide, which is the methodology. This is the how we conducted the survey. So like past survey research projects in Truckee, we created a random sample of voters likely to vote in upcoming elections. In this case, we looked at voters likely to vote in either the November 2024 general election or the upcoming March 2024 statewide primary election. That March universe is slightly smaller than the November election universe. So it's sort of a group of voters nested within that larger universe of general election voters. The important part here is that we are very careful to make sure that the sample is representative of the demographics of Truckee in terms of age, gender, partisanship, what part of town they live in, you know, all the known demographic and geographic variables. And because the sample is representative of those voting populations, that what, that's what makes the results predictive of a potential election. And as you know, from past survey projects, the, the surveys have proved to be quite accurate in predicting voter opinion. In terms of how we actually recruited people to participate in the survey, this has evolved over time. Once upon a time, we just made telephone calls and people answered their landlines and we conducted the surveys that way. Obviously, that doesn't work any longer. So now we recruit people both by telephone calls to landlines and cell phones, but we also invite people to participate in an online survey via email and text message invitations. Those have a unique link that goes through to a password protected website where only one person can complete each survey. So there's no opportunity for people to stack the deck. But it also allows people to complete the survey in whatever means is most convenient for them. They can do it on their phone if they like and any time of day or night. All in all, through those methodologies, we were able to complete just shy of 600 completed interviews, 587. 400 completed interviews is the academic standard for statistical reliability. So we're comfortably above that. And that results in a margin of error plus or minus four percentage points, which means that as we look through the results tonight, we can be confident that if we had talked to every single likely voter in Truckee, these results are going to be within plus or minus 4% of the results we would have obtained if we talked to everyone. So moving on to the actual results. So Alfred, if we're on the quality of life slide now, as we've seen in past opinion research in Truckee, people think it's a wonderful place to live. We found that when we asked them to rate the quality of life, 82% said that it was excellent or good. Those are very strong numbers by comparison to any other community in California where we conduct this kind of research. Only 16% said that the quality of life was fair or poor, with very, very small percentages saying, saying poor. So people are happy with how things are going in Truckee, like we've seen in the past. And if we go to the next slide here, Changes to Improve Truckee, this was an open-ended question where we didn't provide, provide pre-selected options to respondents. We just asked them in their own words to say, if you could change one thing in Truckee, what would it be? And then after receiving those responses, we categorized the responses into categories, thematic categories. And so as you read down the list there, you can see some themes that emerge. One is that traffic and transportation are something that people want to see improved in Truckee. At the top of the list, reducing traffic congestion, but also as you go down, improving and adding public transportation options, improving roads, repairing infrastructure. So that's certainly a key theme that emerges. The other top priorities for improvement tend, tend to have to do with housing and affordability in the community. So that gives us a sense of kind of where the community's heads are at in terms of potential improvements. And if we move to the next slide, same kind of question here, but now we offer specific options for the respondent to select. So we went through this list of potential issues in the community and asked them to tell us if it was a very important, extremely important, somewhat important, or not all important issue. And these are ranked in terms of importance. So at the top of that list is maintaining local streets and roads at 87%, followed by reducing traffic congestion and protecting the local environment, followed by housing and making it easier to travel in Truckee without having to drive a car. So you can see how those issues stack up to relative to one another. Given that Measure V does involve a tax, we also want to look at how these potential issues stack up against the issue of preventing local tax increases. About half of voters said that that was an important issue, but the items that we're trying to fund related to transportation tended to be much higher priorities for the voters. And that's generally the pattern we're looking to see for the basis for a successful revenue proposal. So if we go to the next slide, this is when we get into the specific question related to a potential renewal of Measure V. And what we do here is we present to voters a mockup of a potential ballot measure that they might be asked to vote on. And that includes the bullets at the top there, which are a description of how the funds from the measure might be used. So the first three of those are consistent with the past uses of, of Measure V funding, fixing potholes, improving local streets and roads, improving roadway safety for drivers, bicycles, and pedestrians. We did add to this item, programs related to local transit and shuttle services needed to reduce traffic congestion and protect the environment. That's sort of a new element. And we'll dig into this in more detail here in a moment. From there, we go through the, how the actual taxing mechanism would work. And here at the outset, we're looking at renewing the existing one half cent sales tax at a total rate of 1%. So that's adding a half cent to the existing half cent for a total 1%, raising $7 million. And this proposal would last until ended by voters. So basically in perpetuity unless voters were to end it through the, an by voters. So basically, in perpetuity unless voters were to end it through the initiative process. And so we posed this question to voters and asked them if the vote were held today, how would you vote? And if we go to the next slide, which is titled Initial Ballot Test, you can see the results. So of course, this measure requires a two-thirds vote. And out of the gates here, we're seeing 60% overall support. You can see that breaks down about half and half between people saying they would definitely vote yes, and people that saying they would probably vote yes, compared to about 32% saying that they would vote no. So obviously, not at the two-thirds mark where we would need to be for success. But again, this is at the outset of the survey before we provided much information. So if we go to the next slide, which is the Projects and Services, this is where we unpack that ballot measure into its individual components and ask voters if they would favor a measure if it were to include these various components. So we go through the various potential uses of the measure from fixing potholes, which was at the top of the list with 93% of people saying that they would favor a measure if it were to address that issue, down through the additional sort of traditional uses of Measure V funding, repairing and improving local streets and roads, improving storm drains to capture trash and pollution before the interlocal waterways. And then we also see some of the transit items rating quite strongly here in terms of helping seniors and people with disabilities remain independent, even if they can't drive, but also microtransit services like TART Connect. So all of these potential uses of funds, aside from the bottom two, resonate with at least two-thirds of your voters. So lots to work with here. And I think it's encouraging to see that the transit services are rating at levels similarly high to some of the traditional road and street improvement uses of Measure V. So if we go to the next slide, which is titled Positive Arguments. Of course, if you put a measure on the ballot, voters will be exposed to the discussion and debate that occurs over the course of an election cycle. And we want to simulate that in the survey to see how support changes as people learn more about the proposal. So we presented a series of positive arguments that they might hear from proponents to see what was most convincing to them, but also to see what their cumulative impact is. At the top of the list is something we've seen pretty consistently in Truckee, which is local control. The notion that every penny raised here would stay here for specific improvements to roads and transportation. 75% said that that was a convincing argument. From there, we also saw that the notion that, you know, roads are being used more than ever before, and we need these improvements to improve traffic, also the impact of rain, snow melt, and other issues that have environmental impacts unless appropriately dealt with along the roadways. And then another issue that's been a consistent, a strong message in Truckee, which is the notion that a sales tax is paid not just by local residents, but also tourists and second homeowners that visit the area. So anyway, this gives us a sense of the types of messaging that are most persuasive in a positive way for the potential measure. And at this point in the survey, if we can go to the next slide, which is the interim ballot test, we circle back to that same ballot question and say, now that you've learned more, how would you vote? And what we see is that support has risen four percentage points. So we're now at 64% overall support. The definitely yes has moved up a little bit as well. But we are sitting about three percentage points shy of that two-thirds passage threshold. So even in an environment where we kind of make our best positive case, and there's no opposition, we're not quite getting to two-thirds. So if we go to the next slide, which is the negative arguments, obviously, we need to present both sides of the coin to represent what happens if opponents speak out against the proposal. And so we tested a series of potential negative arguments to see how convincing those are with voters. At the top of the list, the idea that this funding's been in place for 20-plus years, that we still have traffic congestions and transportation issues, that was a convincing argument to voters, along with the idea that Truckee is already an expensive place to live for young families, essential workers, seniors, others on fixed incomes, and this tax would make it even less affordable. So anyway, that gives us a sense of the types of negative arguments that potentially resonate. But what we're really interested in, if we go to the next slide, which is Slide 18, where do we end up after people have heard both positive and negatives? And we're right back where we started at 60%. So, you know, obviously, not at the two-thirds mark, but with strong supermajority support above the 50% mark nonetheless. So not knowing, as we entered the survey, where we would end up in terms of support, in addition to looking at a full 1% tax or a half percent increase on top of the existing Measure V, we also wanted to look at how sensitive voters would be to different tax rates. So on the left-hand side of the screen labeled 1%, you can see that that's that 60% support that we ended up at at the final ballot test. We then followed up and said, well, what if the increase was only at a quarter cent, resulting in a three-quarter percent total transportation sales tax? And we did see support rise up to 64%. So again, not quite at two-thirds. And then finally, we presented, what if it was just a simple renewal of the existing half-cent sales tax for transportation, not resulting in any tax increase? And with that question, we saw support jump dramatically to 78.6%. So that's the one point in the survey where we are above the two-thirds threshold for passage. So if we go to the next slide, in terms of key conclusions, so first of all, that basic feasibility question that I mentioned at the outset, do we think that a renewal is feasible? The answer to that is yes, with some caveats. Voters clearly rank transportation issues as the most important issues facing the community. So we're in alignment there. There is strong support for the renewal of Measure V, but at that half-cent rate, we are seeing some sensitivity to the tax rates. We do have popular projects and strong positive arguments. But at the higher tax rates we tested, we're not seeing that two-thirds supermajority support. And there was a general receptiveness to some of those opposition arguments, so that creates some vulnerabilities. And then there's the unknowns that are beyond our control in terms of the trajectory of the economy, inflation, other competing measures that might be on the ballot. So we want to take all that into consideration as we move forward here. So if we go to the next slide here, Slide 21, which is the Observations and Recommendations, we always want to remind you that, you know, a poll is just a snapshot in time. It's not a crystal ball that predicts the future. It tells us what the opinions were of people on the days and evenings that we contacted, that we asked for their opinions. And so as the environment evolves, so does public opinion. But a couple of things to think about, while we're not seeing two-thirds support here, we are seeing support comfortably above both a 50% threshold and a 55% threshold. And as I'll talk about here in more detail, the state legislature recently approved a constitutional amendment that, if approved by statewide voters, reduced the threshold for city special taxes from two-thirds to 55%. And in that context, these numbers are quite strong, and we're consistently above the passage threshold here. So more on that in a minute. You know, we need to keep the project priorities consistent with voter priorities, which I think should be easy, because their priorities align well with what the town is proposing to do. But if we do take a measure for the voters, the town's going to need to be prepared to thoroughly tell the story about how Measure V has been used and why continuing that funding is important. And we will need a strong independent campaign to make sure that we realize the support that we need on Election Day. So to wrap things up here with a final few last slides, the next one here is the Potential Strategies. So as we think about the survey data results here and where we could go forward, we've been moving on a timeline to keep the option of placing a measure on the ballot in March available to us. And I'll speak to that timeline here in a second. The only option that we really think is viable to move forward quickly with would be a straight renewal of the existing half-cent rate. So I know one of the town's goals is to broaden the use of those Measure V dollars to include some of the potential transit services. So one option would be to put that renewal on the ballot soon with the same tax rate, but to expand the potential uses to cover transit. So that's one option we see as viable. Another option would be to think about a longer timeline and potentially putting the measure on the ballot in November of 2024. That measure could potentially be structured as a general tax that only requires a simple majority. Again, you know, these numbers, while challenging in a two-thirds context, are very strong in a simple majority context. Of course, that would free up the use of funds to uses beyond transportation. But, you know, that would be part of the town's budgeting process annually. One potential advantage there is that could allow you to capture the limited sales tax increment that's available under the statewide cap for Truckee before it's potentially taken by the county or a regional agency. So that's one consideration for that proposal. And then the last option that we're suggesting here is that you could consider putting the measure on the ballot in November of 2024 or later, and thus take advantage of Assembly Constitutional Amendment Number 1, which I referenced earlier, which would reduce that threshold from two-thirds to 55%. And if you go to the next slide, Alfred, just a little more detail on that ACA-1 option. So this is a statewide constitutional amendment that has been approved by the legislature, but it still requires approval from a majority of voters statewide. The plan is for that measure to appear on the November 2024 ballot, and it's written such that it would apply to measures on that same ballot. So if you had a local transportation measure on that ballot, and it received 55%, and the constitutional amendment is approved, then both would take effect. Again, it reduces the threshold from two-thirds to 55% and would apply to city measures like we're talking about here. It does require additional fiscal accountability protections, like mandatory annual audits and independent oversight, but you have typically included those provisions in your tax measures anyway. And the proceeds must be used to fund the construction, reconstruction, or rehabilitation of public infrastructure or affordable housing. And Alfred, if you'll go to the next slide here, I've just listed the defined uses of public infrastructure, which, as we've highlighted there, does include improvements to transit, streets, and highways, which are obviously the uses we are envisioning here. So last couple of slides just have to do with timeline. So if you'll go to the March 5 election timeline, Alfred, we're here tonight delivering the results of our feasibility assessment, where with the caveat stated, we do think that something is potentially viable. But if we want to be on that March ballot, the deadline to qualify is November 6. So there's a very narrow window of time to do the awareness building in the community, develop the measure, and bring it back to council to place on the March ballot before we would have to move into that independent advocacy campaign in which the town cannot use any public resources to advocate for the passage of the measure, so that it has to be truly independent and coordinated by independent private resources. The alternative to that, if we go to the next slide, is potentially putting one of these measures on the November 2024 ballot, in which case we have more time to take those same steps. The deadline to qualify for the November general election ballot is not until July 8. So anyway, I know that's a lot of data and a lot of options to consider, but I'll throw it back to Alfred to talk about the discussion.
Alfred, did you have anything else to add?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do it.
Oh, yes, the recommendations here.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So these are captured in the staff report. And as Charles mentioned, there is a short path and short timeline to go, should council want to go to the March 24 primary. So that is one of the questions to discuss tonight, or ask the council, is whether or not to pursue this renewal of Measure V at the March 24, 2024, primary. Have staff to return in a few months to discuss other avenues or opportunities, whether it's a special sales tax, or reconsideration of another form of Measure V renewal for the November 2024 general election. And then just other things to consider that are mentioned in there that does have bearing to these decisions is the TART Connect program and ongoing and sustainable funding for that past the June 20, June 30 of 2024, that our budget into that fiscal year.
Yeah, and just a follow-up with some information that was in the staff report. I think staff is suggesting that the March 2024 timeframe seems too aggressive at this point, just given the data. The the fact that TART Connect is only funded through the end of next year, next fiscal year, June 30, 2024, that's the one challenging piece of this, right, is we were hoping that this potentially could be a funding source for TART Connect that could come online at around that time. If we were to renew Measure V, but expand the allowable uses, renew it at the half percent, make it also eligible to fund transit, which would include TART Connect, that would be a viable way to move forward, it would appear. We'd have to do it very quickly. But then effectively, what that would do is reduce the funding for your road maintenance program, because you'd effectively be diluting the Measure V dollars that are currently being used to fund road maintenance, to now fund the same amount of dollars, be funding road maintenance and transit. So your road maintenance level of service would need to be reduced, which we don't think was the council's initial intention with this. So then we looked at what's the timing with Measure V, again, because it's four years out before Measure V will sunset. There isn't necessarily a time of the essence issue with renewing Measure V at the half percent. It looks like there's strong support for that. We expect that there would continue to be a couple of years from now if we just decided to do a straight-up renewal. We were also reflecting on a lot of the priorities that the council has identified through the recent general plan update, and the, some of the new programs that remain unfunded there, and really internally asking ourselves the question, does it make sense to look at the possibility of a general tax? And we know there's pros and cons to that, that could fund more than just TART Connect, and more than just some of the increased transit services. And should we take a step back, give that some thought? And that's obviously up to you all. But I think our suggestion is that pursuing a March 2024 renewal seems too aggressive, given the data that we're looking at, that if you were interested in looking at a renewal in November of 2024, combined with the hope that ACA-1 passes, that that could be a viable path forward, or pursuing a general tax in 2024 could be a viable tax path forward. We think if we did that, then that could, it could put the funding in place for TART Connect and some of the other services a little bit later than we had originally intended, but in a timeline that keeps the program funded in the long term. So anyway, I'll stop at that.
Yeah, maybe if I can just point out, we did include, sorry, I know you want to get to deliberations, but to piggyback off of what Dan was saying, we did include the library polling that recently went out, and our intention for including that, it really echoes a lot of what we heard in this polling in terms of community priorities. The VTT Visit Truckee Tahoe flash vote that went out recently has some similar themes that occurred through those responses as well. And that's really where we step back and say, are there broader issues that maybe need some funding sources that a general tax could potentially make sense, or at least be worthy of a discussion? So we were looking at it kind of holistically with all of the information that's come back.
Anyone else on staff want to make any comments? Just kidding.
I think we're done.
I appreciate all that insight. Thank you. And thank you, Charles, very much for that presentation. So we will start with questions. And Councilmember Zabriskie, I will go to you first.
So what I'm taking from this staff presentation is, given the polling, to have a special tax that increases to 1%, a certain portion of the community would need to be persuaded to support it, a portion of the community that doesn't support it now.
Yeah, there's 60-plus percent support now, which is, you know, a strong majority. There isn't 67% support, at least according to the data.
And I know this is beyond our area of expertise, but do we have any idea of what would be required to increase the odds of getting a percentage required for special tax?
Yeah, I think at a minimum, a strong advocacy campaign from a group who was, whose mission was to see this measure pass. And at this point, there seems to be some interest in the community, but there isn't a, at least that we know of, a defined group that's organized, that's ready to pull the trigger on fundraising, you know, starting a month from now.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Can you just confirm, how much does our current measure generate annually in revenue?
About three and a half million.
Thank you. That's it for me. And thanks for including the, all the survey results with the very concise staff report. Very helpful.
Vice Mayor Polavy.
Thank you, Charles. Always a wealth of amazing information. Um, so just a quick clarification, if we go to ballot in November, coupled with ACA one, we have to choose whether we're going general or special, and if we chose special, we meet, but ACA one fails, then we're still back at two thirds, right? Just to be clear.
Yes, so.
And we can't, and, and we're choosing before we go, basically. We're not, I've peppered Jen with a lot of these questions already.
You can't have your cake and eat it too.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, just so you all know, one of the other questions I asked prior to was can you split it and do like half general and half special? And, um, that answer was also no. Um, and is ACA 13 also on the ballot? And the opposition to ACA one, basically as far as I've read, there's going to be opposition to ACA one?
Well, I, I think you can expect that the California Business Roundtable will be opposed to ACA one. Um, they're the supporters of ACA 13. Um, there is pending litigation against ACA 13, seeking to prevent it from even appearing on the ballot, which is a very rare thing. Um, but it's possible, maybe in this case, that the California Supreme Court, um, would take that step. And rather than having to work its way through the court system, I think it goes straight to the California Supreme Court. Um, so it's a little bit up in the air at this point as to whether ACA 13 is going to appear on the ballot. Um, but whether or not it appears on the ballot, I think we can expect that there will be some opposition, organized opposition, highly funded opposition to ACA one.
Would it be of staff's opinion that relying on ACA one is super sketchy and parlance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm just wondering what your thoughts are, because it sounds super risky.
Yeah, I mean, ACA one is.
Could be good in the future.
Could be. It's, it's thoroughly out of our control, I would say.
Totally.
Um, yeah, so, you know, I think, uh, the notion of pursuing a special tax in November, uh, we'd want to set a target of getting to a two third super majority, so that, so what, that whether ACA one passed or not would be irrelevant. Uh, it's just that we've got.
We've had that wiggle.
We're, we're not quite there at the moment.
Uh, maybe a question for fellow council members who sat on this committee. When you were sitting on said committee, you know, what was the talk or the communication regarding how we are going to garner public support for some of this stuff? Um, because, you know, trails were really easy. Certain ballot measures have been much more straightforward. This one is again, going to be one of those gray ones, in my opinion, um, that doesn't have an inherent champion out there. Can you give us some color commentary, Mayor Romac?
Sure, I'll provide some color. Um, so yes, I think to Dan's point and what you just brought up, there was some of that discussion. There isn't an automatic transportation nonprofit that is out there operating right now that would be great to fundraise and/or do advocacy for this. So I think that was one of the discussions around. March seemed really early because there is support for, as we saw from the polling, there's support in the community for it. So there could be folks out there that could come together, but it probably would take some time.
Sorry. And would an organization like the TNT TMA not be a qualified entity to run a support or opposition campaign due to their funding mechanisms?
Correct. I don't believe that TMA could, uh, directly run and fund a advocacy campaign because of, uh, a fair amount of their money comes from dues that come from public agencies. So I think that would create a complication. There may be, uh, membership in the TMA who, kind of independent of the TMA, might choose to, uh, take up, take up the cause, but that would need to be evaluated.
And I think my second to last question, uh, is what degree? So are we simply restricted in the borders of TART Connect due to the limitations that we all have put on it based on costs and other things, right? We've said, hey, let's expand it to the entire border of the town of Truckee, just to be equitable to our citizenry. Um, and that was a measure, that was just a step we took internally to control costs, basically. Uh, or I mean, that was one of the steps we took to control costs. So is there anything preventing us from expanding the borders of TART Connect and/or linking into, um, connections with Placer County's system? Should this turn into an open ended, um, funding source that was allowed to be used for transportation services?
So just to make sure I understand the question correctly, I think it's if you, as the council, wanted to.
Allow Placer County.
Operate TART Connect in portions of Placer County.
Precisely.
Could you do that? I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. So there's nothing preventing us from only using collected sales tax dollars across region? I mean, we do it with our housing stipulations as well. We say, hey, as long as you're in the school district, we'll serve you.
Our, our limitations have been exactly what you pointed out, funding.
Funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I would say maybe ability for the contractor to base up or bring in additional staff.
Yeah, I mean, I just think one of the most inherently strong arguments should we go to ballot is going to be linking us in with our higher tourism, um, operations. I, I think that's clearly a sentiment that was shared. So how do we, how do we tie into that? Uh, to me is, is sort of one of the questions. Um, and then just to clarify one more time, and I feel like I've asked this before, but we can't go with a general on the primary ballot. We have to take generals, have to be on November, and specials can go on primary or Novembers, right? Yes.
I, I think there's an exception that you can if you declare an emergency, but there isn't an emergency.
There's not an emergency. Okay, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Klopstad.
Yeah, I think you actually covered most of mine. The, um, I think the whole ACA one special tax versus going with a general tax. That's, that's a question that has a future story to tell. Um, we might know more about that in a couple of months, or at least with, um, ACA 13. So I think my only que- question remaining is that, so this will roughly generate about three and a half million more. We expect about two and a half million of that would be taken up in what we want to see as our transit program. Is that correct?
To fund the, the program as it currently exists, it's about 2.5, yes, 2.4 actually.
So that we, we've a remaining million dollars for the other community priorities that we're seeing come back very consistently in these polls, right?
It would, I mean, the, the way microtransit is based right now, the TART, uh, connect system is, as demand might grow, those wait times may have to be in vehicles added and, and things like that too, so.
We're also hoping that there's an adjacent growth in our sales tax revenues, so.
I mean, there's some things like maintenance of vehicles and infrastructure that, you know, we would need to account for, but by and large, you would have some amount of money to fund any number of priorities.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all those questions. I do not have any further questions, and so we will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment on this item? If so, you can come on up to the podium and you will have three minutes. No, seeing none? All right, we will close public comment and bring it back up here. And Councilmember Zabriskie, start with you.
Um, yes, my initial thoughts are, um, it would be pretty risky to pursue a renewal, um, on the March 24 ballot. And, um, I think there's some unanswered questions long term about, um, how to maximize, um, the chances of success for microtransit that we still need to dig, um, deeper into. But long term, I'm also con- concerned that, uh, persuading the public to vote for an increase in Measure V and not be able to demonstrate a reduction in traffic congestion, could hamper the community in the success of, uh, transit and microtransportation over the long term. And I just say this because part of the traffic problem is what's happening with the ski resorts and the, or short, how much of our traffic congestion is due to pass through traffic. And the most wonderful thing would be to pass Measure V at 1% and have some kind of solution with the ski resorts at the same time, and then we take credit for it because of the transit. But again, that's wishful thinking at this point. Um, so, um, I am concerned about TART Connect pilot funding, and I think we should have staff return in a few months. I'm open to contrary, um, opinions and reasoning.
So I'm hearing you say not push renewal in March, but have staff return to discuss potential future measure in November, and also any ideas they would have on other potential TART funding that could cover at least that delta between June and November?
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Given, um, the data that we saw this evening and that we're sitting at about 60%, I would not support pushing for March 2024. Um, I think that we certainly could discuss, you know, whether we want to go on to the November 2024 ballot. Um, I will say that I, you know, this is not going to be a surprise, um, have concerns about structuring as a general tax, given some of the conversations we've had in the community around general versus special. My preference would be to, you know, obviously try to do a lot of that work to get us to that, that super majority threshold. Um, I guess that's one follow up question. Would we poll again if we were starting to have another community, like a more in-depth community conversation about this? Would we poll in another, like six months before we would have to make the decision to actually go on the November ballot, which is in July, right, Charles?
Yeah, that's correct. And yes, that would be our recommendation, because we'd want to draft what ballot language would look like. That's what we'd poll and understand what the interests are in the community.
Okay. So I mean, that could be an option too, just so we understand, like, are we seeing that we're just, even if we have a very strong community conversation over the next six months, are we staying stagnant? Or are we seeing a trend in one way or another? Um, and I think some of Charles's points, like, we don't, we have economic uncertainty this time. Like, we, we don't know, um, you know, there's a lot that we can't predict. So that could help us make some more decisions about whether we want to go on the ballot in November or not. Did I hit everything?
I think so.
Okay.
And I'm guessing you would like to hear any ideas on TART funding as well.
Well, yeah, I absolutely support TART Connect, absolutely. And I support continuing our, our roads program and our, our paving and all of the other things that we do on the infrastructure side that, that our road tax supports, so, um, yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Polavy.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot and trying to find, um, a solution, and I have come up with not a lot of good conclusions at this point. Um, I think I'm aligned with most of what's been said. Um, I, I don't disagree. I, I think that what we should also consider, and, and I'll pin it on you, but, um, you know, I heard a little bit maybe of a general, of separating them out and maybe using a general, um, in November to, um, at a half percent, so renewing Measure V potentially later. I don't know if that's where you were going with some of your comments, but, um, I'm interested in that. That would follow some of the Measure K work that we've done in the past and, and potentially add to that. Um, I think we need to be very cognizant of timing, um, and that we should act fairly quickly within the next year, 18, 12 to 18 months. I just think we've heard of some other potential tax measures coming down, and I think we should always be wary of that. So I don't have an answer. I'm okay with punting for now, um, and potentially splitting off a renewal of Measure V. Um, I think that's also, Measure V brings with it really solid backing. I think we need to be conscious of understanding how TART Connect serves our entire constituency and, and if that's something they're willing to fund and at what level. I, I don't know that we have enough data, um, on that quite yet. So that's the tough one for me. Yeah, ongoing TART Connect pilot funding, that's going to be a really interesting challenge. Uh, I don't have an answer on that one tonight, but yeah, I'm willing to entertain it, and we're going to figure it out. Uh, lots of punting from me. Off to you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor.
What else you want to hear?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit more slicing and dicing that, um, we will need to do. Just to start actually with the ongoing TART Connect pilot funding, just to be clear, we, we wouldn't, if we, whatever ballot measure we decide to put on, um, the November, uh, the November ballot, we're not going to actually start receiving that funding until more like April. Um, so there's six months of the year that's unfunded, and then maybe another three months of the year that we would have to do some sort of transitional funding for. Um, I trust our staff to be creative and figure out opportunities to share with us, to, to, um, to give them direction on for that. But it's a, it's a scary thing, because I think we've all become very committed to that program. So the not going forward on Mar- in March, um, with the special taxes, very challenging. I, that, that was really what I was hoping we would be able to do. Um, I would still consider doing just a renewal of Measure V and kind of what you were alluding to, separating that out. I think, um, there is clear and significant support for these other community priorities that I think we could package into a very specific ballot measure for that. That's a little bit different of a trajectory that, that we've been on though, and I, and I recognize that, but it's, um, since we're not going on the March ballot, I am welcoming the opportunity for staff and my other council members to kind of contemplate that and consider if that's something that they would want to, um, want to look into more. I think what we have with Measure V and what we're doing with our roads and trails and everything that it serves is excellent. And there's, um, and we're kind of trying to tack on these other things, which does and does not work, depending upon how we're presenting this to, uh, to our community. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind here is this isn't up until 2028. So we could go forward with a special tax for the full 1% in November. And if ACA doesn't pass and this doesn't reach its threshold of 67%, we still have two more election cycles. So I feel like we can be a little bit more, um, aggressive and risky and, and because we have that buffer. But those are things that I've, uh, that I too am kind of contemplating on and recognizing that we're not here to make those decisions tonight. But I do want to make sure staff and fellow council have the opportunity to consider those before we bring this back for discussion.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do you want to add something?
Well, can I ask a, a follow up question? Because I think that that was an interesting point, and it prompts me, Charles, you might, um, have some insight on this. Have you seen if, you know, a scenario like that, we went on the November ballot and it wasn't successful, and then you're coming back, you know, in pretty short succession? Does that tend to increase your chance of success? Or does it actually go the other way? And I have no idea, which is why I'm asking, where voters say, hey, you just tried for this and it didn't work. And now I'm kind of upset just to see it on the ballot again.
Well, typically what you can't do is put the same proposal right back out again, because that's essentially telling the voters, you know, we tried once, you didn't like, we didn't like the answer, so we're going to give you a chance to vote again. And voters don't like that, right? So you have to make some sort of concession to them and say, why is this proposal different? So, you know, and I think you always want to go in with, you know, a clear plan for how you're going to be successful. So I think we would, we would plan for that. I do think the notion of, you know, you have an opportunity to do a general tax to address a variety of needs in November of 2024, and you also have the luxury of time before the core Measure V special tax expires in 2028. There may be a scenario here where you do those in sequence and, you know, address the TART Connect need and maybe some broader needs in the near term, and then see how ACA one shakes out and come back with a proposal to renew Measure V later. I think that's certainly a viable approach.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in alignment with everyone. I think not going forward in March makes sense, you know? And I will say, well, we didn't see a 66%. As Dan pointed out, we saw a majority of people still supporting our roads, our transportation system. So I do think that is good. It's exciting. Highlight that. I definitely, you know, I'm excited for more polling because that lets us look at, you know, special tax. Does it make sure to do the full 1%? Or as Charles just suggested, maybe do something different and do a general tax now. And also the polling allows us to ask more questions about some of the other issues that could be put together, whether it's a special tax or a general tax as well. So I think giving ourselves a little bit more time and doing a little bit more research makes a lot of sense. So definitely have staff return in a few months and discuss our future options. And then, as we all said, continue to be creative with finding TART Connect funding in the interim and keep moving forward. So I think that was our direction. Any questions or all good? Okay.
I think we're clear.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Charles. We'll see you, we'll see you again in the winter when we do our next polling.
Thank you.
And thanks, Alfred. All right, with that, we will move on to our council reports. Councilmember Clovisad.
7:26. Fantastic. I attended a Civic Well Learned, Civic Well Lunch and Learn Seminar today on energy efficiency and funding opportunities. There's this program that they were introducing, Housing Energy Score. And it sounds like it's been very prolific down in the Bay Area, managed by one of the Bay Rens. And so I'm going to have a conversation with them and likely have them come up and do a presentation to the Climate Transformation Alliance and see if there's interest in our broader community on housing or hosting some sort of program like that. I also attended Councilmember Henderson's presentation to the Climate Hub Social at Lift Wellness, where she reviewed the general plan and did a deep dive into our climate action plan. Very well done and extremely well received. This group was so excited to see all that we had in both documents. Spent a bit of time working with the Climate Transportation Alliance governing partners, planning both for our quarterly meeting this Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Truckee Airport, and then also our Accelerator Event, which will be, which is where our subgroups are going to do their pitches on their projects or their ideas. And that is November 2nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Art Center, and all y'all are invited. Please come and can ask questions and, or throw tomatoes if you want. The entire region is invited, quite honestly. So we'll be getting, you'll be seeing this hopefully in newsletters and social media and things like that from our governing partners as we're trying to make sure the community knows this event is happening and feels welcome. It's not just for climate geeks, it's for everybody. I also attended Lake Tahoe Electric Transportation Forum down in South Lake Tahoe. And that was, it was its first annual and very excited. Got to check out all sorts of electric vehicles. They had a whole array there, but primarily it was focused on what are we doing in the region? How do we make it feasible, faster, more economical for personal and business and all sorts of different levels of charging and transitioning our fleets? So gleaned a lot of great information and I brought flyers for staff, but I forgot them. So I'll have to bring them to you another time. And then, of course, the highlight during the last two weeks was attending the Nevada County Sustainability Summit, put on by Supervisors Hardy Bullock and Heidi Hall. And it, it was just a great program. We had 110, 120 people, somewhere around that there. So pretty significant increase from the first annual and a lot of great panelists. And it was just, it's really encouraging to see the broad regional participation in that. And it really is the focus of this whole Eastern County region and adjoining partners, including, you know, Forest Service and Washoe Tribe and a plethora of others. So it was very good last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pallavi.
I have nothing to report other than a lot of high school volleyball in the past two weeks, two more weeks.
And how's the team doing?
They're doing quite well, yeah. And our varsity team is doing awesome, and it's a very successful season for Truckee High volleyball all around.
Nice.
Two more weeks left, maybe three weeks.
Councilmember Zabriskie.
I attended the Truckee River Basin Watershed Group meeting, and that includes a report on stream flows and reservoir levels. The Department of Water Resources is going to be asking the Army Corps of Engineers to change the flood control requirements to allow summer levels of reservoirs to remain up to a month longer in the fall, so they could extend to December 1 instead of November 1. And also to allow summer levels to take place one month earlier, so March 10 instead of April 10. And that's all because the way flood control operates now, essentially Stampede, Prosser, and Boca all need to be drawn down to pretty low levels as of November 1 in order to provide capacity for flooding. And then in the spring, everything, we can't start filling reservoirs till April 10 out of concern over snowpack. What's happened is because of climate change and improvements in technology, more of our precipitation on average is falling as rain rather than snow. So while last year was a big snow year on average, we're not having as high a snowpack in the spring. Technology allows us to get a better measurement of what the snowpack is. We have better weather forecasting, which allows us to rely more on the forecasts and make adjustments in reservoir releases in advance. And finally, there's less precipitation in the fall months. So all those things combined support changing it. It would benefit our community by improving recreational opportunities and fish habitat. It would allow for improved fishing, boating, water skiing, swimming, kayaking, paddle boarding, and just scenic quality of our surrounding natural environment, even though reservoirs are unnatural. Okay, so anyway, and then we had two events in the afternoon with the River Revitalization Committee. One was a walking tour of West River on the south side from Donner Creek east back to to Truckee Rents. The interesting thing on that walk was, one of the interesting things was Danielle pointing out gaps in the trees where you could really see a fairly extensive expanse of floodplain that cannot be developed, but could be much more of a parkland. Essentially, it can't be used for development, but it does have value as, as natural areas. Also, a sound specialist from the airport, Jeff Bonasco, pointed out, we have four noise corridors, one natural and three artificial. The artificial ones being West River, I-80 and the railroad. And he just posited, just speculating, posited road realignment, which maybe some other people had considered, but I had not. Essentially, bringing the road closer to the railroad, so you only have two noise corridors instead of three. That's just brainstorming was the benefit of the walk along West River. And then the meeting that followed, the highlight of the meeting for me was we have 16 members on this committee and 15 attended. There was only one absence. And as for the walking tour, I think we had all but one of those who signed up attend. So right now, the participation is really excellent. We'll see how it is in three years. Oh, and TNT TMA, we had Enterprise, Enterprise Car Rentals made a presentation on van pooling. I was unaware of this. They're going to make a pitch throughout our region to local businesses and governments and any other people that could sign up for van pooling where they provide the van and essentially the, the structure for operating van pools, where it's up to the participants to pick their driver and figure out where they're going to park the van. But it'd be something the business could use, like the hospital or the lumberyard to move employees. Right now, it sounds very attractive, but maybe the devil's in the details. And then it wasn't in the manager's report, but Dan reported on the Mobility Hub being ready almost now to, to park large vehicles, buses and that sort of thing. So gets them out of Donner Pass Road, you know, gets them out away from the depot where they can park out at the Mobility Hub, which should help ease congestion downtown. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you. As Councilmember Clovisad mentioned, I've presented to a couple of different groups in town on kind of council goals, elements of the general plan, where we're going, what we've been up to. Thank you so much for being at that event. I think it was, like you said, very well received. I met with Steve Frisch of the Sierra Business Council. We talked about housing and energy and, and things of that nature. I also attended the County Sustainability Summit. I went to a ribbon cutting for Thrifty Tales for, to benefit the Humane Society. And then all day today, I was at a California Energy Commission Summit down in Sacramento to really, it was all on building to carbonization, but to really focus on how do we actually achieve state goals? How do we leverage the different federal investments, braid those together with state and local investments to accelerate adoption throughout the state? So I think that was it.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing the word on our general plan and a bunch of that stuff at the Climate Social Hub. That's great. I attended the R2SC Walking Tour with Councilmember Zabriskie. It was a great, there was eight of us, I believe, because there couldn't be a quorum, and just great dialogue and all the, you know, Jeffrey from the Airport District, Jan Holen, who's part of a property ownership collaborative in that area, and Stephanie Oliveri, like all these people with different insight. So it was really fun to walk along that way and Danielle providing her great insight as well. And then the committee meeting, fantastic. Jan and I spend a lot of time together now because I was also at the TNT TMA. And one other thing I wanted to highlight, the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, PCTPA, is doing their 2050, working on their plans, starting their plan, and they have a survey out now where they're asking people to help prioritize projects, and it's separated by area. So you can go to just the East Placer section, but it asks about project like the Transit Priority Lane on Highway 89 and 267. Should that be a priority? So, you know, any of us who are interested in the region and how we all work together, that might be something folks are interested in. Also, after the TNT TMA, there was an Unmet Transit Needs Workshop that was put on by the PCTPA as well as the Nevada County Transportation Commission, and just an opportunity to discuss some of the unmet transit needs in our region. You know, a lot of the consensus was we need more frequent service. We have limitations with funding as well as staffing. So nothing new, but good to just have conversations around that. Also attended a Chamber of Commerce ribbon cutting at the Stone Ridge House downtown last week and was on the wine walk, and I ran into Councilmember Clovisad. That was a fantastic community event and great to get out and see lots of people and have fun. So with that, I think we are all done and we are adjourned to October 24.